I hereby call the school committee to order it being Tuesday, June 6, 2023, 7:00. I'd ask you to please stand and salute an American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, but to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to read the following into the record. Welcome to the open meeting of the school committee. This is your agenda that will be discussed this evening. Please note the hearing of visitors is also included. You have a statement of questions. You need to give your name to the secretary. We already have those. Thank you for those that signed in. In addition to attending, the public can view this meeting via television on Comcast Channel 98 and also on the 1071 HD version, and finally also online via the following link, which is www.youtube.com/thebrocktonchannels. Please note tonight's agenda also includes the annual student recognition and award ceremony, which will be held this evening in the Nelson Auditorium. At 7:00 PM, regular school committee business will resume in a little theater following. So I need to establish a quorum at this time. Mr. Sullivan.
Yeah.
Mr. Homer.
Here.
Vice Chair Ayers.
Here.
Mrs. Rivas-Mendez.
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Here.
Ms. Azak.
Here.
Mr. Sullivan.
Here.
Chair is here as well. So the process tonight is we will take a recess motion. We will go in and do the student awards like we do every single year, and then we will come back in and resume school committee. So is there a motion to take a recess at this time, please?
Motion to take a recess at this time?
Mr. Sullivan made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Ayers. All in favor, kindly raise your hand. All opposed, raise your hand. We're in recess, and we will come back after we conclude the student recognition, which is in the Nelson Auditorium.
Thank you, Mr. McCreener. Thank you to the jazz band. Tremendous job. Thank you. So good evening, everyone. I'm Superintendent Mike Thomas. I want to begin by thanking everyone for attending tonight. I want to thank our school committee members, our mayor, Senator Mike Brady, and you here from every one of them tonight. So we want to thank them for putting on this wonderful night for all of our great students. We feel it's important when we did this tonight to showcase the tremendous work of our art department. So I want to thank the director of art for the Brockton Public Schools, Sarah Richards, for displaying the work. I also want to thank Mr. McCreener and the jazz band for performing for us tonight before we started. Thank you so much. As you know, our award-winning jazz band. So first, I want to start this night off by bringing up our great mayor. Mayor Sullivan to say a few words.
Yes. Well, good evening, everybody. I am so excited to be here tonight on behalf of the city of Brockton. This is a night that city council, the school committee, state reps, state senators, we always cherish to come here because this showcases the best of Brockton, Brockton Public Schools students, which is the next generation. You know, on Saturday morning, the weather wasn't perfect, but we saw quite a few, 832 kids to be exact, graduate from Brockton High School. And then today at Mazziano Stadium, we saw the elementary school kids on Field Day at Mazziano Track running around. And tonight, culmination of a lot of hard work in the classroom and extracurriculars. So as a guy that went to Brockton High and Brockton Public Schools, I'm so proud to say a job well done. Congratulations. But I'm also here as a dad because my daughter or my children's being awarded tonight as well. So father, parents, guardians, and loved ones, job well done as well. But I also want to just speak for the kids because at the end of the day, you went through so much more than any of us adults had to go through, right? You had to go through remote learning, and COVID just changed everything. But we're called the city of champions for a reason. And so as a dad, but also as the mayor, I was able to witness firsthand the dedication, the drive, and the determination that each and every one of you really have, right? It wasn't normal to sit at your house looking at a screen. You needed to be in the classroom with your kids and in the hallways and learning from the teachers. So I also want to give a round of applause for all the awesome educators we have. So the seven school committee members, and you're going to hear from all of them, and Mike Thomas, the superintendent, who also is a graduate of Brockton High. We are just so proud of each and every one of you. Your future is so bright. Brockton Public Schools is presenting you truly the stepping stones for success. So continue to do what you're doing. You are really the star in the sky, and we're just so excited to see what your future is going to behold. But tonight is a night to recognize each and every one of you. And again, I just want to say congratulations. You're almost there. Summer's almost here. It's not quite yet, so keep going. But let's continue to roll up the sleeves, eyes on the prize, and continue to always remember what a special city Brockton, Massachusetts is. God bless each and every one of you. And now it's my honor to recognize Senator Michael Brady.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to convey what the mayor said. I want to thank all the parents and all the teachers for all the work you do day in and day out. And I know as we came out of the COVID pandemic, there's still people suffering out there too. We cannot forget that. But kind of get back to somewhat normalcy. You know, it's been a difficult past couple of years for a lot of families out there. I want to tell, I don't want to tell you how old I am, but I'm a 198 graduate of this wonderful school. But I am so proud and honored to be a state senator. I served on the school committee here in Brockton, the city council as a state rep, and now as your state senator. I'm so proud and honored to hear all the good news and the accolades that these students have achieved. I was here for a stem cell awards night a couple of weeks ago, and these kids are so unbelievable. They're much better than I was when I was a student here. So I'm just honored to be your state senator. Any support we can be at the state level, please let us know. We are giving more money to Brockton and several other communities with the Student Opportunity Act, the Fair Share Amendment, and the Chapter 70 money. So I'm just honored to be our state senator, and congratulations to all the students. You make us proud, and you make us the city of champions. Thank you.
Now it is my honor to have the Ward 1 school committee member come to the podium, Kathy Ayers, who this year is serving as vice chair of the Brockton School Committee. Vice Chairwoman.
Good evening, everyone. I want to begin by thanking not only the students and families for joining us tonight, but also for the school committee as well. One of the things that is probably the most fun for the school committee or events like this, for us to see the results of the hard work, to see the students progressing, to see our students doing so well. And all of you represent that for us. I'd also like to thank our staff, the school committee members, for being here. But we look forward to this event every year. Celebrating your accomplishments is a reminder of why we do this work. I mean, it really is a reminder as to why we do the work that we do, the meetings, the discussions, all of the hard work that we put into it. It's for all of our students. It's for Brockton kids. To meet all of you and to honor hundreds of incredible Brockton kids is essentially why we run for office and why we're here every day. I'm going to now invite our superintendent, Thomas, back up. I don't want to be here too long for all of you because I know it can be a long night, but I want to thank you for being here. I want to thank you for your commitment to our district. And I want to thank you for all your hard work because what you do as kids to get to this point is hard work. So congratulations to everyone out there.
So we decided to do our student recognition night a little differently this year. We wanted to make it a celebration for all the wonderful things that have happened this year and all the honors the students have received. But I first want to take a moment to thank the teachers, staff, and administrators, all staff of the Brockton Public Schools, who work every day on behalf of the students and the family. So I want to give them a round of applause. I also want to thank you, parents and loved ones, family members, for all the support you give your children every day. They could not be the great students that they are without your support at home from not only you, but the extended family and friends. So we want to thank you for entrusting the Brockton Public Schools to educate your young people. So it's a great honor. So we thank you for that. So we'll get going to read all the wonderful things that have happened in the school district this year, and at the end, we'll end with our new promotional video for the Brockton Public Schools. But I'm going to invite up the school committee person from Ward 5, Judy Sullivan.
Thank you, Superintendent. This year, the district opened new middle school honors academies at all seven middle schools. We welcomed 222 middle school students into the National Junior Honors Society this year for the first time ever. Many members of the inaugural class are here with us tonight. Speaking of the middle school this year, we had nine students from South Middle School and West Middle School receive National Latin Exam Awards and recognition of their exceptional understanding of the Latin language. We welcome our National Latin Exam Honorees. And now the school committee member from Ward 6, Joyce Azak, will speak.
We rolled out our Early College Program at our high schools this year. As an example of how impactful that program is, students at the New Promise College and Career Academy are finishing their freshman year with six college credits. They are currently finishing American Sign Language 2 at UMass Dartmouth. You'll see a few of those students using their sign language skills in the new video we're premiering tonight. Thirteen students received their Certificate of Completion from the Brockton High School Medical Interpretation Program. One of the only programs of its kind in the nation. Again, another program you'll see in the video tonight. I'd like to welcome our school committee member, Ward 3, Jared Homer.
Middle schoolers and high schoolers in the Empower Yourself Program won first place in the High School Global Economic Symposium and swept the middle school competition. They came in third place in the National AAIA Autonomous Drone Competition. The Brockton High School Wind Ensemble won first place, Outstanding Band Award, and the Adjudication Award at the World Strides Philadelphia Heritage Festival in April. The band scored a near-perfect 96.6 out of 100. And now I'd like to welcome school committee member Tim Sullivan from Ward 7.
Good evening. The Brockton High School Drama Club received 11 All-Star Acting Awards at the Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild in 2023. State finalists as well as All-Star Awards for Excellence in Set Design, Lighting Design, Costume Design, Makeup Design, and Student Directing. They did a great job, and I'd like to welcome Ward 2 school committee member Cynthia Rivas-Mendez.
Good evening, everyone. Brockton High School Concert Choir won a gold medal at the 2023 MICA Festival. In the advanced concert brand, they also brought a bronze medal from the festival. Seventeen of our Brockton High School student artists received Scholastic Art Awards, and eight of them were featured in the UMass Dartmouth Emerging Young Artists Jury Exhibition.
Good evening, everyone. Tony Rodriguez, Ward 4. This is going to be very long, so let's hope everybody's ready here. In athletics, our student athletes received 27 Ostalactic Honors Awards this year, and that doesn't even include our spring athletes, that those awards haven't been announced yet. The Brockton Boxer Basketball Team made it to the Elite Eight in the MIA playoffs this year, as well as our Boxer Football that played at Fenway Park for the first time ever. At Fenway, members of our Concert Choir, JRTC, honor guard led the opening ceremonies with presentation of colors. We're proud to have a strong junior ROTC program here at the high school. And four of our new officers are here with us tonight, and they're instructors. Can you please stand? I want to thank each and one of you for your leadership and commitment and the sense of civic duty that you demonstrate every day here at the school. I know the program will thrive under your leadership. I could go on all, all day about the student incredible accomplishments, but these are some of the examples of the hard work that's done this year. And that brings me to this premiere of this promotional video. Earlier this school year, the district began working with Brockton's own Anwan Studios. Working with Anwan to showcase the best of Brockton, but instill the sense of well-deserved pride in our student and staff. There wasn't much of a learning curve. Anwan CEO Rui Lopes, a 2005 graduate of Brockton High School. In fact, Rui was one of Superintendent Thomas's students at East Middle School. About half of Rui's team of Anwan are Brockton High graduates. The other half are considered honorary Brockton High graduates. Maybe we'll get a degree for them someday. They know and love this community, and that shines through in our promotional video. And so further ado, let's roll the tape. I hope you guys enjoy this.
Welcome to the Brockton Public Schools, where students' creativity and dreams are celebrated. With residents representing more than 40 countries of origin, we create programs that build on the strength of our diverse community. The district proudly offers dual-language programs beginning in kindergarten because multilingualism is the way of the future. We believe that students learn best when they feel valued and supported, which is why building positive relationships is at the heart of everything we do.
Self-discovery begins with friendship.
BPS is nationally recognized for its music and arts programs. Students have the opportunity to explore their creativity and feel safe to express themselves in any medium they choose.
Self-discovery begins with self-expression.
As a city of champions, hometown of not one, but two boxing legends, hard work is the Brockton way. For more than 50 years, Boxer Athletics has been a powerhouse program. Whether they are in the classroom or on the court, our students persevere, hold themselves accountable, and work together to achieve a common goal.
Self-discovery begins with commitment.
Our dedicated educators and support staff are there every step of the way, helping students overcome obstacles and celebrating their big wins.
Self-discovery begins with learning.
We innovate and adapt to better serve our community in the current moment. We established honors academies at every middle school to expand access and challenge students during those critical transitional years. From biotechnology to engineering, BPS is dedicated to preparing our students for the careers of tomorrow. By offering programs such as Early College, Career and Technical Education, and one of the only medical interpretation programs in the country, the district ensures that our students graduate with so much more than a diploma. What's the impact? Generations of Brockton kids who believe in our community so much that they come back to us.
As superintendent.
As a director of music.
As a school committee member.
As a teacher and former department head.
As a school committee member.
As a special education teacher.
As a data accountability specialist.
As a school committee member.
As a chief marketing and communications officer.
As mayor of the city of Brockton.
Self-discovery begins here.
That's the Brockton Public Schools that we all know and love. I'm going to, in a moment, I'm going to invite Rui up and his team to say a few words. I mean, that was unbelievable. That was really, really, really well done. I want to thank Rui, and you know, he's a guy that lives and breathes the city of champions. So thank you and your team, and you'll hear from him in one minute. Just to give a little background on that, nearly 200 students were involved in the production of video, and this includes Mrs. Mescheroni's kindergarten classroom, Mrs. Williams' grade 1 classroom, Mrs. O'Brien's grade 4 classroom, Mrs. Zanaboni's life skills classroom, the Drama Club, the Wind Ensemble, the Concert Quiet, Chef McLaughlin and the Culinary Arts Program, the Medical Interpretation Program, the Biotechnology Program, our Promise students, our Champion students, multiple student athletes, and one of our many superstar artists, Tuzi Zhang. The voice of our this is none other than Steven Diaz, who a lot of you know has made a lot of magic on the stage, co-starring in Mama Mia and also Hall Dolly. Steven, like many of his peers in the class of 2023, will be, he's going to be pursuing theater in college. He'll be studying musical theater at Emerson this fall. We wish him all the best. We'll be seeing him in Hollywood soon. I do want to, I want to make it clear the video would not have been possible without the enthusiastic support of Superintendent Mike Thomas and all the awesome staff and educators and students here in the Brockton Public Schools. I want to thank them for not only participating, but for contributing their creative ideas, for how to make this video look and feel and sound, and it really reflects our community as a whole. It is now my sincere pleasure to introduce Rui Lopes and his team at Anawan Production. Mr. Lopes.
So first, it's kind of surreal being in this room. Spent about four years in this building when I was here. But first, I just want to thank Mike Thomas for giving us the opportunity to be able to showcase what we can do to be able to showcase the talent that we actually have in Brockton. And it's weird because when I went to junior high as a seventh grader, he was my gym teacher. So all these years later, to be able to get the opportunity to be able to work with him is a surreal feeling. But yeah, I mean, when we produced this, we were, I think it was five days of production. We got to, at least for me, it was kind of a walk down memory, like coming back and being able to go through the different spaces that I was in over, you know, a 12, 13-year period. But being able to see the new generation of students, of artists, just kind of lets me know that, you know, a lot of us have left over the years, but the school is still in good hands, and we have a lot of talented people. Again, just by showing what we can do as a team, a lot of us are here. The company is based out of Brockton. based out of Brockton, but being able to see the new talents that we have here was just, it was a beautiful moment for me overall to see. Again, I appreciate it. Thank you for giving us the opportunity, and, you know, hopefully we get to do this again in the future.
As I was mentioning before, about half of the staff here is Brockton High alumni. We are a Brockton-based company, and it was an absolute honor to be here, to be a part of the story that is the future of Brockton, and we couldn't thank everybody who participated enough. The kids were amazing, the teachers were amazing, and everybody a part of it, including Jess. Jess, thank you so much for helping us. She was amazing throughout this entire process. Thank you guys so much. I don't know what to do next, but we're going to get on stage. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you, Rui and his team. Great, that's an amazing job. And I also want to thank the chief communications officer for the Brockton Public Schools, Jess Hodges, all the work she put into this. So Jess, thanks so much. So finally, before we wrap up, I want all the students that received awards to please stand up tonight, so we can give you all a round of applause. We thank you so much for all you did this year, and I thank you for all you're going to do next year, and we look forward to great things from you, which you've already done. So thank you, parents, again. Thank you for spending this time with us, and it's much appreciated. Have a great night. I hereby bring the Brockton School Committee back in order. We have concluded our business for student recognition. I will reestablish a quorum. Mrs. Sullivan?
Yeah.
Mr. Homer?
Here.
Vice Chair Aylers?
Here.
Mrs. Rivas Mendez?
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Here.
Ms. Azak?
Here.
Mr. Sullivan?
Here.
Chair is here as well. We reestablished a quorum. We are back in the session. Agenda item number two is the hearing of visitors, which is our standard process. We've had people sign in. For those that are speaking, again, the school committee rules and regs allow for three minutes. We have eight people sign in tonight. So again, if you could try to state of the three minutes, that would be greatly appreciated. First individual to sign in is Mr. Michael Eppolito. Mr. Eppolito, please. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Brockton High School and Brockton Public Schools are still recovering from the pandemic.
Is that quick? One second, Ms. Tebow. I don't think that's on. I don't think that's on.
Yeah, right? Check, check!
There it is.
All right, thank you so much. All right, I hope that doesn't cut into the time. No, we're set. No, anyway.
We said it right now.
Yeah. Brockton High School and Brockton Public Schools are still recovering from the pandemic. We're still working to regain our full stride with next year, seeing a senior class who will be the last class whose GPAs were impacted by remote learning. We need time to gain our momentum back. We need the classroom space, and we need all the staff back. Don't close a building and bring back all the staff. We have well over two hundred signatures from teachers, guidance counselors, support staff, and multiple admin. They've signed on to this statement, and together we're saying, do not close a building, do not rearrange the administration, and bring back all the staff. Now's not a time for cuts. Now's the time for the city of Brockton to reprioritize where the funds are directed and fully fund the schools. Support our superintendent in not having to make cuts. With the city budget of almost half a billion dollars and eighteen million dollars needed to fully fund the schools, the funds must be reprioritized and given to the schools. Last school year, 2021, 2022, at Brockton High alone, we lost over a dozen teachers who quit outright through the many new and growing challenges. Call back the staff before we permanently lose those who've stayed with us through these challenging times, as they find jobs elsewhere in this round of layoffs. Now's the time to make schools the top priority when set in the city budget. The city must prioritize taking care of our kids now and in the years to come. Enrollment numbers will rebound, as our schools are shown to be safe, in the news for the many fantastic reasons we deserve, the many wonderful student performances artistically, athletically, and academically. On your trip to Springfield Central, you all came back with a great idea to implement regarding the new cellphone policy. How are you going to measure the success of that change or any other change in the next few months if you are allowing these major changes to Brockton High School? These changes require years of planning, not months. If you all are going to go through these wholesale changes of closing a building, rearranging the administration, reducing the number of positions, you all will be risking the detonation of a chaos bomb. Thank you for your time and careful consideration.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Eppolito. Mr. Eppolito, if you'd like to submit those into the record, we could take those, those signatures? Sure, one sec. Sure, thank you. Next hearing of visitor that has signed in is Limerus Lopez Mercado.
Sorry, one minute.
Good evening.
Oh, good evening, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. As a student, I felt compelled to say a few words. We are demanding that the city of Brockton fund schools first. We have been in the news for all the wrong reasons, and that is extremely disheartening. We, as a high school, have such great things to show. When I tell people I go to Brockton High School, I want to feel proud of that statement. I often don't feel safe when I go to school here. I deserve to feel safe. We deserve to feel safe. The U.S. is losing teachers at a record rate, and many, many other districts are looking to hire our teachers, support staff, and guidance counselors. In order to make positive improvements as a district, we need the city of Brockton to fund schools first. If not now, when? Our generation, by no fault of our own, found ourselves in lockdown, isolated, struggling through remote learning through a pandemic that hasn't been seen in a hundred years. I will be a senior next year, and my class is the last that will have gone on to high school during remote learning. Developmentally, we are still recovering, closing the gaps made by COVID. We need to continue to rebuild and not tear down. So again, we say, if not now, when? This is why we are demanding that the city of Brockton fund schools first. Fund schools first! 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 Thank you again for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Thank you. The next, next individual is Kerry Rodriguez.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Kerry Rodriguez. I'm Matthew Miles and David's mom. I'm also the president of the National Parents Union. We are an organization that supports parents in all fifty states, Washington, D.C., and Puerto Rico, as we demand equitable access to high-quality education and economic mobility for our children. We are here in solidarity with the youth and parent organizations in Brockton here on the ground in the city, and at the request of educators who reached out to us directly for help and support after expressing their deep concern with the financial transparency and the lack of foresight regarding enrollment changes that the district is facing, all of which is causing deep chaos for families, kids, and staff within the district. The fact of the matter is that the city of Brockton has been losing hundreds of students every year for the past several years. This means that parents and families are actively voting with their feet. To hear that Brockton Public Schools has lost thirteen hundred and fifty students is no surprise. When only twenty-one percent of students were meeting grade-level expectations on the 2022 MCAS English exam, twenty-six percent of students were meeting grade-level expectations on MCAS math. The children of Brockton deserve more. Parents have expressed concerns about outdated curriculum, libraries without books, limited access to resources for children with special needs, and a lack of overall reimagination and innovation within their educational experience. Parents and families feel like interactions with you are transactional when this moment calls for transformation. Additionally, safety continues to be a paramount concern for parents. Instances of bullying, violence, and inadequate security measures within school premises have created an atmosphere of fear and anxiety. As parents, it's our duty to prioritize the well-being and safety of our children. And when we feel that these fundamental safety or educational needs are not being met, yes, we do move. To expect us to believe that the cost of housing is driving families out of the city as an excuse, while Brockton should be a haven for families fleeing high housing costs in places like Boston, is laughable. We are not stupid. Many parents are deeply frustrated over the lack of transparency and responsiveness from school officials, most recently regarding the layoffs of a hundred and thirty teachers. And while we hear you say you are listening to your ESAR surveys, when we hear the city of Brockton now has a bloated administration while slashing frontline educator positions after students and parents have asked for more direct student support, it doesn't scream, "We are listening to us." Additionally, as you conduct these layoffs to balance your budget, we urge you to consider that these layoffs will have a disproportionate impact on teachers of color in the district. The district is projected to lose twenty-three percent of its teachers of color compared to only ten percent of white teachers due to antiquated seniority-based layoff policies. The children of Brockton deserve a dynamic and engaging learning environment, just like any other city across the Commonwealth. It should foster their intellectual growth and prepare them for the challenges of the future. The fiscal cliff of 2024 is coming, as ESAR dollars end from the federal government. We hope your enrollment projections are right. The Brockton Public Schools also has some serious work to do with children, with parents, with families, and communities to restore faith that you are prepared and up to meet this challenge and will put our children first. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. The next individual is Joshua Brown. Mr. Brown?
Good evening.
One, two, three, four.
They just told me to throw my name on the list to speak. You can go ahead, as long as I get a chance to go, I don't mind.
Well, it doesn't matter. I mean, we have the list. Are you, are you Elizabeth? You'll be next, Elizabeth.
I didn't mean to take your spot, I'm sorry. I have a family who might be, say, the same, similar. I have a feeling we might say the same, similar things anyway, perhaps. Good evening. As a lifelong Brockton resident, a graduate of Brockton High myself, and now parent of three Brockton Public School students, I'd like to take just a second to express my frustration at the state of the education system. The mismanagement and lack of foresight that's led to the termination of 172 positions across the system is concerning and adds stress to an environment that's already spread far too thin. In a district where classroom sizes already see teachers outnumbered by more than 30 to 1, I'm curious to see how the superintendent and those who manage the budget equate strengthening our education department with massive cuts and removal of key programs. In an enterprise article on May 19th, the city cited plummeting student enrollment and rising transportation costs at the heart of an 18-million deficit. As someone who has managed both for-profit and nonprofit agencies, I cannot see how a failure to adapt to economic circumstance constitutes what amounts to penalizing students through staff and budget program cuts. In the same article, much of the onus is placed on the state for not rounding up to the 80th percentile, providing the city with close to 7 million in funding for low-income cities. While this additional 7 million would alleviate some of the gap and reduce the number of positions eliminated, I find it shameful to attempt to place the responsibility with something so vague as the state. The state government has enough of its own issues to deal with outside of making sure Brockton gets an additional 7 million. If anything, the state looks to have set a great example for boundaries and what appropriate spending to the budget looks like. Brockton Public Schools was once the standard for the arts, athletics, and academics. With continued cuts, I'm very fearful that the tangibles that once made Brockton so great will be left to the wayside as our administration struggles to keep its head above water, repeatedly cutting one program after the next. It's no wonder that families are removing their students and opting for charter and private programs. The decision for my oldest to attend Southeastern VOTech over BHS despite the absence of a music program she adores was made all the easier when class size and student safety were considered. I recognize that the school committee is not directly responsible for every action taken by the administration or the school system, but as the body that helps to plan and oversee its course, I would be remiss as a parent if I did not bring these concerns to the table. My hope is that the superintendent and those responsible for managing our school's finances find the solutions that will ensure Brockton Schools returns to its successful ways, or they be removed in favor of those who can take actions that do not impede the future viability of our children's successes. Thank you.
Elizabeth Corbett, please.
Good evening.
I'm short. Good evening. I'm speaking to you as an educator concerned with what we are teaching in the Brockton Public Schools. I take my career very seriously, and I always say that I will continue to speak up when students are not getting the education I would want for my own children. These students are the future firefighters, nurses, and even the future mayor. And they are the only kids I have. Children learn best by modeling. This school committee is modeling a failure to invest in the city. Why will our future leaders invest in a city that has so blatantly refused to invest in them? Something important we teach at BHS is building relationships. Failure to invest money in education is a failure to invest in our future leaders. Children learn by modeling. Today, I am here to teach students to demand investment in Brockton's children's future. Brockton's children are Brockton's future.
Lena Hallessy, please.
Hello. I'm just going to start by saying that in my two years of being here, two years of spending my time at this school, two years of sitting in classes and doing work and trying to be a good student, I have only seen the student body get punished for it. There's been a consistent uptick in violence within these schools. There was a stabbing recently, and it is still very recent, consistent, basically daily fights within the halls started within classrooms. Hateful words and actions altered the school, and nothing is ever done, along with the lack of effective consequences. And there is a significant lack of positive relationships between students and educators within this building. There is barely any effective enforcement on the IDs we are meant to wear, and when it is enforced, it is enforced brutality, like teachers grabbing student IDs and being disrespectful, which can be seen as the criminalization of students. There was a stabbing recently, and then it was brushed off by, followed by a rumor of uniforms instead of making sure that the students felt safe, instead creating the idea of more rules to be enforced and further criminalizing students. In fact, the criminalization of students within this school is constant. There's a major focus on controlling students as opposed to actually building relationships with them. If you want the student body to behave, then give them the respect you want and model it. If you continue to enforce more and more strict policies such as uniforms, auto failures, and phone pouches, it will create an adversarial response from students, which is already seen consistently. As a student, I'm concerned about the school's inability to effectively teach appropriate behavior and effectively enforce proper consequences that benefit the learning environment. There is no way any of these new policies could be enforced, given the constant, consistent lack of effective consequences that allows for the current policy to remain unenforced. And the laying off of staff plays a major role within this as well. If you cannot enforce the policies normally with the current amount of staff, how do you possibly expect to run the school at all with 65 members of your staff? How completely gone at the high school? These are the reasons enrollment is down and why the parents and the students themselves are choosing to enroll in different schools. The rampant violence, the lack of effective punishment, the classroom disruptions, and classrooms that will be more crowded than ever. You have given academic liaisons pink slips, guidance counselors, adjustment counselors, people who are meant to form a bond with students, people who are meant to understand these students and grow alongside them throughout their high school careers, people who manage so many things for students, people who listen, people who understand, and people who may just be better for the student than you may ever know. The bond formed between people who specialize in working with specific kids is being diminished. It is ignored. I don't know if you realize how much counselors actually do for the students. For some, it is their only support, and by firing these people, you are damaging a student's high school career. If you are trying to improve behavior, then the authoritarian approach is ineffective because by getting rid of the support that the students, it is getting rid of the supports that the students need. Overall, with the way this school is run and the way that students are treated within it, it just seems as if this school and this district hates us.
Adrian Roberts, please.
Good evening. Thanks for giving me the chance to speak tonight. I'm here to speak on behalf of our program over at Champion High School, which with the recent district reorganization, the future kind of hangs in the balance. I'm just going to start off by telling you guys that I am a Brockton resident, born and raised, went through the Brockton School System, started working right after graduation at Brockton Public Schools, and now I have three children that are also in schools in Brockton. So I do believe in the educational system and the opportunities that this district provides. So at Champion, we pride ourselves on having smaller class sizes. We have closer personal relationships with our students, and we hold them personally accountable. And these are sentiments that simply cannot be afforded to every student at bigger programs. For a lot of our students, it's the first time they feel seen. It's the first time they feel heard. These are not your average students. Many of our students are emotionally impaired, anxious, fearful, and intimidated. They were not successful at bigger high school programs. Since its inception, and even since I started at Champion, the definition has changed many times, from Champion Charter School to overage, undercredited, Rising Nine freshman, Diploma Plus project-based programs, and a few other identities that Champion has taken on and implemented throughout the years, and that the staff I've seen has taken in stride. This past year, we were given a new building, which we dedicated to Robert C. Jones, which was a man who spent a good part of his career advocating for the demographic that we serve. We were told we were no longer to be considered a behavior school, but it wasn't long into the school year before we started receiving student transfers from BHS for behavioral issues. We also absorbed some of the in-person students from the now-defunct BB Russell Behavioral Program, which is, again, which our teachers took in stride. It was never a problem because most of us have worked with behavior students most of our careers, but we weren't given the resources or documentation to successfully integrate these students into our program. After our move from the Keith Center, the physical sizes of the classrooms were much smaller, materials were lost and damaged in this shuffle, and many of the resources that were promised to us for our students to be successful were either never delivered or not fully set up for the students to utilize. We lost three MCAS subject teachers to the mental strain put on us due to the above-mentioned hardships. Those positions were never filled. We also lost an assistant principal less than halfway through the year that was never replaced, a position that is invaluable to a school with our population. Yet we still managed to graduate 32 students this year, many of which would not have graduated at all if it were not for our program. And while 32 may not seem like a large number in comparison to the hundreds that graduated from Brockton High School, those are 32 students that now have a diploma and a shot at a better future. They are 32 students with parents, grandparents, and siblings that got to watch them walk the stage after what I'm sure was a very trying and challenging road to success. 32 students that have accomplished something because the teachers at Champion believed in them and supported their success. And I think it's important to let our statistics speak to the success of our program at Champion. You'll see the Department of Education shows that our MCAS scores were on par for ELA with Brockton High's, and our math scores were not far behind. You'll see that also that Champion has a higher chronic absence rate, but doesn't account for the fact that the chronically absent high school students from across the district are often transferred to our roles, thus boosting that previous program's attendance numbers while decimating ours. It also doesn't tell you that Champion has a number of students that previously had chronic absences, almost never showing up at other programs, yet then coming to Champion and not only drastically improving their attendance, but their grades as well. It doesn't tell you that we often end up with students that have unimaginable outside adversity that come to school around people who care, students that have previously gotten lost or glossed over at bigger schools, which is why I think that to remove our alternative learning program from the district, from its own building, would be devastating to our current and future students. I'm not here to undermine or criticize any decisions. I'm here to make a plea to any available source to please reconsider this reorganization and to realize and utilize Champion for the value it brings to our district. We're a school full of dedicated teachers and staff that could take their skill set anywhere, yet year after year, we have chosen to be here with a student population that is not only more challenging, but most in need of our service. If this district, where I've spent most of my life, is as concerned with the students as I believe it to be, then depriving students of a choice to go to Champion over Brockton High is not doing what's best for them. Instead of dismantling our program, give us the resources to be successful and do what we do best. Help our most vulnerable student population thrive. Thank you.
The last individual is Michael Landers, please.
Good evening.
Good evening. I probably look at this a little bit different. So Mayor Sullivan, Superintendent Thomas, school committee members, faculty, staff, parents, and students, I love Brockton. I'm a believer in Brockton. I don't believe that Brockton High is made up of brick and mortar. I believe that Brockton High is made up of flesh and blood. I am a first-year teacher here at Brockton High School. Among other events, I have been pink-slept from my physical education position. After recently going through life-challenging events, I have decided to live my life in service, and I have chose to come back home and apply the skills and knowledge I have acquired to help the community that I love so much. I truly am a boxer. For the past 27 years, I've made my living as a college football coach. For over a decade, I've had the great honor and privilege to serve as Mount Ida College's as Mount Ida College's head football coach and life skills coordinator. I stand before you as a highly qualified and decorated professional. Among some of those achievements are several conference championships, numerous Coach of the Year awards, two Lifetime Achievement Awards, the last which I was honored with three weeks ago by the National Football Foundation. The recognition most special to me are the honors I received while at Mount Ida College. I was recognized as a prolific community builder with emphasis on culture. After six years of employment at Mount Ida, it was bestowed upon me the great honor of being the namesake of the Mike Landers Exemplar Award, an award presented to administrator, staff, faculty, member that continually demonstrates the ideals of student leadership as evidenced by their commitment through championing student life. For my efforts in serving the community, I was also awarded honorary doctorate in 2018. But I grew up here, went to school here, where I was a two-time member of state championship Super Bowl teams, class president my freshman and senior year. Now I was a member of the community here who has vast experience in team building and fostering positive culture. I believe I can offer some accurate observations. During my time, I have met, listened, asked questions to as many faculty, staff, administrators, and students as I could. The overall theme was that we are collectively failing. Morale is low, to say the least. We are fractured. Just like any team enduring a losing streak, you have to find a way to unify the team with a singular goal or purpose. Making a comeback takes everyone working together to accomplish a targeted goal. Losing teams point fingers, make excuses, traffic in rumors, and misery. And believe me, misery loves company. Right now, we are all at odds with each other. Self-interest is destroying our team. Coaches wear their mistakes, evaluate them, create a game plan for success, outline the goals and plans of action, and then rally the team behind them. Coaches often have to reposition players, make depth changes, implement new schemes. However, you always take care of your most vulnerable players, your first years. I've had the great pleasure and opportunity to work with some outstanding teachers this year. Many veteran teachers have taken great care and time to support me and give me guidance during my first year. I have also worked with several first-year teachers who are alums. They are simply amazing. Brockton High School is not overwhelming for them. They understand that our students are incredible mentors. They love Brockton High. We can't afford to lose them. Their passion is what is desperately needed. They are our future. However, that is the issue. Our most vulnerable teachers get no protection from the union. I know this from personal experience. I've been approached by many union members and even some union execs about filing a grievance in regard to the head coaching position. Let me be clear why I didn't. First, personally, I don't agree with the nature of the agreement. I believe our kids deserve the best, and if there was someone clearly more accomplished outside the system, we should be able to hire that person and do what's best for our student athletes. I understand as a coach the many benefits of being in the building, but question the intent here. Is this agreement best for our programs and our student athletes, or is it about money and self-interest? In my opinion, athletics is the most valuable asset in creating positive school culture. Secondly, the reason why I didn't file a grievance, I fully support our football program as a teacher and alum. Coach Wiggins is our head coach, and I would never diminish the program and the coach's ability to be successful in an extremely difficult job. He deserves our support, and our students also deserve our support. Finally, as a first-year teacher, I have little confidence that my union could or will protect me if I filed a grievance. Is the union willing to use all its tools available to protect my job? As a first-year teacher, I get very little protection. My union dues would be better served paying for an attorney. Would union leadership even carry my grievance? As a first-year teacher, am I being asked to sacrifice myself? I am not a pawn. However, if it is needed to protect collective bargaining power, I am willing to go out on my shield. Please advise. Just know if you recommend I file a grievance, the process will be very public and transparent. I only point these things out in my experience because it's time for us to come together and work together. If we need to work together, if there's a way for us to find more money and fight for more money, we can organize together. I do believe in union leadership can rally the troops, and we can load up the buses. We own them. We're going to load them up, and we can head to the State House. And Ms. Rodriguez, thank you for being here, but if you can organize our parents and help us find more money, I appreciate it. But if you are here for some other reason, this is Brockton. This isn't a show. This is our families. This is the place that we love. Please leave if there's any other reason why you're here. Give us the direction. Together, we are a powerful voting block, and we trust in the plan that you come up and you lay out before us. We will back you. Let's start to build our community back better than it was before. Tough decisions will be made, but it's time for us to throw rocks together. Changes need to happen, even if it means I have to lose the PE job I love so much. Maybe some of you forgot, we have always been the underdog here in Brockton, but it also creates the most resilient citizens in the Commonwealth. It's time to fight together because we are Brockton. Thank you, guys, and I always have said this- and I always have said this, Viva the Bears.
Thank you for everybody speaking tonight. That does conclude the hearing of visitors. We'll continue for the agenda tonight. We have a pretty lengthy agenda. Agenda three is a consent agenda, which is A, B, C, and D. Are there any members of school committee that would like to take these out of order or take them out separately, or would we take, what's the will of the committee, take them collectively?
Motion to approve consent agenda?
As collectively?
Yes.
So motion made. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. It was properly made by Mrs. Sullivan, second by Mr. Sullivan. All in favor of that, kind of raise your hand. All opposed, raise your hand. Let me read that into the record if I could. Consent agenda. A is the approval of the minutes dated May ninth, 2023, special school committee meeting. B is the approval of minutes for May 16th, 2023, public school choice meeting. C is a request for the authorization to submit proposals and expenditures of funds, and it's three subsections. FY23, Community Oriented Policing Services, COPS, School Violence Prevention Program, SVPP, in the amount of $399,186. The next one is FY23, 24 Gilmore Elementary School Writing Program from the Deborah Monroe Noonan Fund in the amount of $30,000 even. And finally, the last one is FY23, Donation Grant from the Frederick Weber Foundation, the amount of $500. D is the acceptance of Human Resources notifications, which is personnel actions, leaves of absences, resignations, and retirements. Motion's been made, properly seconded, and it was unanimous vote. Consent agenda has passed, A, B, C, and D. We'll now go on to number four, which is reporter, superintendent of schools, Mike Thomas. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to introduce Dr. Michelle Connors, Assistant Superintendent for grade six to twelve, to talk about Junior National Honor Society, which is brand-new this year, how the ceremonies went, and also, as you know, we have National Junior Honor Society in all our middle schools. This was the first year of that, and we good to go?
We'll be. Thank you, Superintendent, school committee members. I feel like I've seen you a lot lately, and it's been great between graduations. And the reason I'm here this evening is to speak about our National Junior Honor Society induction ceremonies. I'm here because Todd Erickson, our coordinator of accelerated programs, couldn't be here tonight, otherwise he would be presenting this information. So as you know, when you approved the addition of the Honors Academy to start at all of our middle schools this year, one of the pieces of the Honors Academy, while not directly connected, was the addition of National Junior Honor Society chapters at all of our middle schools. And so in the month of May, and one more this week, on June eighth, we've held all of our inaugural NJHS induction ceremonies. So we have over, I may get this number wrong, it's either two sixty-six or two sixty-five, the number's in my head, but it is in the PowerPoint, so I apologize, across all seven of our middle schools. So to give you a little bit of background, students have to apply. First, they're identified. So the National Junior Honor Society is a national program with very strict guidelines on, A, what it's needed to establish a chapter at each school, and then once that chapter is established, the application, the identification of students who are qualified to apply, and then the application process. Some of you, including maybe the mayor and Mr. Homer, may have seen some of these applications. They are quite lengthy. So first, to be identified, it is open to any student in our middle schools that meets a criteria, which is a minimum GPA of 3.0. So I really want to thank our data and accountability office for helping us pull all of that together. We don't have GPAs at middle schools, so we worked closely with NJHS to say, how do we do this? And Dio Miranda and Sandino De Santos were very helpful there. Once those students are identified, like I said, it's a 3.0, that's it, you do not have to be in Honors Academy, then we give them applications. Now, it's not just a one-pager. I think it's over five pages. It very much mirrors the National Honor Society application process, where the students have to write an essay, they have to get a recommendation, they have to outline their contributions to their community, which could be the community of Brockton, or the community in their school, the community at their church, whatever that may be. Then you assemble a volunteer, five-member faculty council, so these are faculty members, it cannot be the principal, who step up and say, we want to work together to review all of these applications and identify those students who will be inducted. There's no limit to the number of students that a middle school can induct. All right, we're getting closer. Let's see how close I got to all of this. Test myself. And so, is this thing on, Tracy? Nope. Okay, got it. The green light is helpful. Thank you. All right. So as I was saying, thank you, I apologize. Brief commercial break. So it is a national organization. Just a little bit of history there. There are chapters in all fifty states. Every chapter has a faculty advisor, and I should have led with this. None of this would have been possible, first and foremost, without our school committee's support, but then secondly, by the faculty member who stepped up to the plate and said, I will do this very hard work. Every member, every advisor, we have one at every middle school. Some middle schools chose to split the position, took on, this takes on a life of its own. They help with notifying all the students, giving the applications, collecting the applications, working with the faculty council, setting up all of the brochures, ensuring all the invites are out, and all the communications, meeting with all of the students. Every ceremony has to follow a specific cadence for our school committee members who attended. Many of them, you probably saw all the similarities from how the students take the pledge, how the certificates are awarded, and then each school adds a little bit of their own flair. So I want to really call out the faculty advisors at each of our middle schools because they did a phenomenal, phenomenal job. There are five pillars to the National Junior Honor Society. We used these pillars first as a foundation for really talking about Honors Academy and then, and knowing that we would be bringing on the NJHS. So these five pillars are the same that you see in our high school National Honor Society. As I mentioned, there's a minimum GPA, anyone can apply, that meets that minimum. You do not have to be in Honors Academy. They outline their essay, their service, and then the five-member faculty council reviews applications. They have to use a rubric that is given to us by NJHS, and it has to be a majority vote for a member to be inducted into the National Junior Honor Society. Here are our numbers and our dates by schools. They're ordered in the number they took place, so shout out to our Asheville Middle School families and students for being our very first National Junior Honor Society induction. And last but certainly not least, we're excited that South Middle School will be our seventh middle school to induct their members on June eighth, for a total of two sixty-five. So there, I was right there in the ballpark. There is a pledge. I have a couple of pictures here. I am not at all the best photographer, so I relied on Candy McGann and Todd Erickson and other faculty members who attended to get some pictures of our students taking the pledge. To me, that was one of the most powerful moments was watching the students stand up and raise their hands and take the National Junior Honor Society pledge. To see the look of pride and accomplishment in our students' faces is truly what gets me up every day, knowing that they're engaged in this. The next steps, we just have a few short days, and as I just mentioned, South will be inducting their members on Thursday, but they will have regular chapter meetings, which is required. They will elect chapter officers, so just like NHS, we will have a president, a vice president, I believe, a historian, a secretary, a treasurer that really takes the role of leadership in NJHS. They will do both individual and whole school, our whole chapter service projects. Again, each school is its own chapter. Chapters can come together and do service projects to benefit the even larger community. So we're really excited to learn as we go and let our students take the lead in what giving back to their community really looks like. Lessons learned from this year, it was our first year, as we hope to do our inductions in March. Students can apply any year that they meet the qualifications, so if they were not inducted in sixth grade, they can still do it in seventh grade and also in eighth grade. Once you are in, you are in as long as you maintain the GPA. So we'll have our inductions in March next year. So I just want to say congratulations to our students, to their families. We can't do this work without the support of our families, and obviously, our leaders and our teachers, namely, our faculty advisor at our schools. So that's your NJHS update for tonight.
There's two right here.
Yeah, oh yes, congratulations. Yes, thank you very much. Can you stand up and be recognized, please? You can represent our NJHS. Do we have any more in the audience?
My son right here.
Yeah, congratulations. And I should mention, as I see my BVLA family members here, we are looking into, we are connected with both NHS and NJHS to learn more about how we can have one at our virtual school, so that we're following the bylaws. So that is coming in the fall. Absolutely. Thank you for reaching out and advocating for our students and families at the virtual school. So we hope that next year, we hope that next year, we come to you with the addition of both NJHS and NHS at BVLA.
Amen.
Thank you.
Members of school committee, I want to give you the status update. As you know, there were two individuals struck by a vehicle today. Two students were struck this afternoon. Warren Ave, you knew that, superintendent told us, fire chief, police chief told us. Good news, I just spoke to the grandmother. They're bruised and battered, but they have no serious injuries. So as we know, one was med flighted, so it was very, very touching to go, we're very scared about that. But good news, she said that they're bruised and battered, and as of right now, they're both fine. So I just wanted to give you an update on that because I know you're very concerned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Finally, just the budget update, as the public hearing was tonight. I believe Mrs. Ellers has something to read into the record.
I do.
Thank you.
They were, I don't, what am I reading into the record?
Is it, we already, I thought she had to read the public hearing took place at 6:45, obviously.
Yeah, we opened it up at 6:45. There was no one, we opened it up, kept it open for at least five minutes to see if anybody had any discussion points. There was no one that had any discussion points, so it went without any issue, the public hearing. And that was based on the fiscal year 2024 budget update, just to ensure that if anybody had anything to say. But there was no issue.
Thank you. And just some comments for me about the budget. I thank everybody who spoke. As you know, I really appreciate all you bring and all you say, especially people from Brockton that live in Brockton. You know me. I meet with you, most of you, every month. You know my dedication and where my heart is. So people, all of you in Brockton that want to always come to my office, please come. I want you to see every dime that was spent through Esser money. Every dime went towards kids, programs for kids. So I welcome you to come. These funds are audited. When I hear the word mismanagement, it's absurd. This was a school district that went into a pandemic with eight thousand laptops for sixteen thousand kids. We had to buy every laptop with that money so all students could learn at home. We passed out twenty-five hundred Wi-Fi's that we paid for and supported the monthly charge of about forty dollars a month because Comcast's program was nothing for our families. So I want everybody to come and look at that. I also want people that question the union, this district would not get through and would have never got through the pandemic if it wasn't for the relationships of this school committee and our union leadership, especially with the BEA. I hired four hundred people during the pandemic, a lot of them people of color, because that's what we believe in. However, I failed to lay them off when I saw the enrollments going down. That's fully on me, a hundred percent. But I added four hundred people to the school district over the last four years, and I am not apologizing for that because I invested in people. And some of that was Esser funding that was used for that, knowing that was going away. But I was probably supposed to, and I was recommended to lay off about a hundred and fifty people last year, and I did not think that was a good idea coming out of the pandemic. So we're hoping that enrollment would go back up. We've spent thousands, millions of dollars on keeping kids safe, and I love how people attack Brockton about that, but no one will talk to you about the suburban districts who are going through the same thing. Okay? They talk about Brockton because it's kids of color. And no one wants to talk about the Newtons and the Wellesleys where they have to lock bathrooms and kids vape. And I'm not putting those systems down, but why do they always pick out the urban communities of color? You know where my heart is. I've shown you that. Anybody wants to come and see if there's any money mismanagement, please come on in, because you know me. I'm one of you. I've been here my whole life. I've dedicated thirty years to this school district, and I will not hear outside people tell me that we've mismanaged money, period. But people from Brockton, you know me, come on in. I will show you where every dime went and how we invest in people and kids, and I will not apologize for any of that, especially for people coming in throwing rocks from the outside. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Are there any matters, items refer to subcommittee, subsection B of the superintendent's report? Is there any items that we have to refer to subcommittee at this time? Seeing none, we will move on. Agenda five is unfinished business. Are there any matters before us tonight that we need to discuss unfinished business? Vice chair, is no one unfinished business, because you're aware of it?
Well, we've got three items under, nope, no unfinished business. Sorry.
Okay, we'll move on to six, six of the new business.
Yeah, I was moving ahead too fast.
We do have three matters on a new business. A is discussion of potential vote, MA Mass Desi, single district virtual school amendment for Brockton Virtual Learning Academy. B is discussion of potential vote of MSBA review, Brockton Public Schools Chapter Seventy-Four program as part of the feasibility study of the Brockton High School Core Project. And then finally, C is discussion of potential vote amendment to superintendent's contract. We would take them singularly at this time. A? Someone would like to discuss A at this time?
I didn't, yeah, I think this is more a matter of our, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think this is just more a matter of us adjusting what our BVLA for the Virtual Academy is, and with the changes that we've had. So we have to vote on that as well, correct?
Yeah, so actually, obviously, it's not, the elementary is not closing.
Yeah.
And it's, we open for one more year, and six to twelve is remaining exactly the same.
Correct, okay. And then the second one, of course, we need that. It's the MSBA review for the feasibility study for, you know, obviously, for the Brockton High School Core Project. And then, I don't know if anybody wants to discuss potential vote in regards to the amendment to the superintendent's contract, which we discussed last week. Do we want to talk about that a little bit? Does anyone want to open that up for discussion? I think this might be a good time for us to actually talk about that.
Yes, please.
So, all right, I'll open the floor. So basically, one of the, oh, sorry, one of the areas that the school committee knows that is requiring a lot of attention is the high school. And with that being said, we've spent a lot of time looking at issues very much like Lena Halas brought up, safety issues. What is in the best interest of our students? Where do we need strong leadership? You know, what are some of the changes? Another individual brought up our visit to, you know, Central, Springfield Central, and, you know, what an eye-opening experience that was for us. And with that being said, as a committee, and I have to commend Superintendent Thomas for this, but one of the things that we are looking to do as of this fall is we're amending the superintendent's contract where he will be the interim principal for Brockton High School starting in the fall. Now, I would like to, as the vice chair, say that I fully support this because we need strong leadership at the high school. We need to roll out policies that are going to be in the best interest of our students, but are also going to be feasible for us as a community this large. I mean, some people forget that Brockton High School is almost like a small college. You know, running this with four buildings is like running a small college. And so, with that being said, we're amending the superintendent's contract to include support up here at the high school and attention up here at the high school and to, you know, Mr. Landers said this earlier, to become a team, to become a family again, to bring the community together in ways that, you know, that we want it to be the way it has been in the past. And that is, that can't be done without the support. And Cynthia Burns has done an amazing job up here, amazing job, but she needs help. And so, that is the plan moving forward, is that we are going to amend the superintendent's contract to include not just being a superintendent, but to be the interim principal for Brockton High School beginning in the fall. And I don't know if anybody else would like to add to that, or if we want to say if... add to that, or if we want to say, if the superintendent wants to say anything, or...
Yeah, so first of all, I want to thank Ms. Burns, who I put here two years ago in a very difficult situation. She put so much in. She was pretty much going to head for a district job, and I rerouted her to take over as principal here. She's put some amazing things in place, especially for our students with disabilities and our English language learners. She's put a lot of systems in place. But right now, I have to put my money where my mouth is. There are major changes at Brockton High School, as you know, with a different restructuring, the administration, and possibly policies around cell phones and dress code. And I feel it's very important that I lead that myself. I had a conversation with Commissioner O'Reilly today, who supports that as well. And again, this is not all to say that Ms. Burns didn't do exactly what she was asked to do, and an amazing job. It's just that there are so many changes that need to happen as we listen to students and parents tonight. And I have put, or I've set in motion those changes with some decisions about administration and re, and restructuring administration here at the high school. And it's very important for me to be the person that leads it because that's how much I care deeply about Brockton High School. And it's about the district. Brockton High is the flagship of the school system, which most high schools are. And, you know, we, Brockton High was one of the best high schools in the state when I was here. I worked here for 10 years. I spent six months as interim principal when Dr. Zakowitz first retired. We, as you know, we have a D E C M O U. We work closely with our D E C partners. They are very pleased with the progress of our elementary and middle schools. They are concerned, obviously, with our high school. And I think the district is on the right track, and D E C has told us that. And now it's time for us to focus on our high schools and especially Brockton High School. And it's important for me to be the one to lead it. And this is not leading it from downtown. This is, I will be here every day, starting at 6:30 as the principal. And there'll be people that will be brought with me from Central who will work out of Brockton High School because we all need to do more in administration to make sure we support our teachers, our staff, all staff, our families and students, and that's everyone. The so-called bloated administration that people like to say, well, I'll be a part of it. And we will be here. I will be here. And I look forward to coming back and working with students, even though I'm with them a lot. I look forward to doing that every day. And I, again, I can't wait to work with the great teachers and staff at the high school that already exist. And I want to thank the school committee for their support on this because it's out of the box. Not many superintendents of a district this size would put themselves in this position. But that's how serious I think we need to, you know, we need to bring Brockton High School back to where it once was. And we need to show the state that for the 2% of students that you see in the paper and on TV that resolve issues in a violent way, we have to show that's not Brockton High School. That's not what we represent. That's not what Brockton represents as a community. And I am looking forward to bringing Brockton High School back to where we were and really looking forward to working with the students because they're the ones that really have to help us bring the high school to where it needs to be. Not, it's all of us. So it's me, it's all of us, students, staff, administration, families, all holding ourselves accountable to getting Brockton High where it needs to be. So that's pretty much all. And I thank the school committee there for their support. And just on another note, I will not make another dime for doing the extra job at Brockton High School. I just want to make sure people know that because the next thing in the paper, I'll be making another 300,000 to run Brockton High. That's not the case. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Any questions? Ms. Zak, please.
Thank you, Superintendent Thomas. So the superintendent met with us and discussed his plan. And we might not be asking questions now, but just so the public knows, I mean, some of the questions were, he is staying as superintendent before it gets out that he's not. He is staying as superintendent. He does have a good support group with his deputy superintendents. This is a lot to take on, and we just wanted to make sure. I mean, W. Superintendent Thomas was, when you were deputy, you were, you were, when deputy, when Superintendent Smith had left, he had both roles and didn't fill that position for quite some time. It is going to be challenging, given the changes that we're looking at, hearing from the public. We're going to give it a shot. We're definitely going to try this out and see. And in the past, it's always been positive. And, you know, we're supporting him with this decision. And he has, actually, he just mentioned it again before it gets all over social media, he's not getting extra pay. He's just getting his superintendent pay. He's not getting the additional pay for a principal, and he's taken on double the work. So we're here to support you. We're here to support the families and the students. Sometimes you have to make these drastic changes to start seeing some of the support, some of the changes that we need at the high school. We're listening to everyone. We're trying our best. We're all getting emails. We're getting phone calls. We're doing the best that we can to try to help all the families out. So, you know, we're here for you, Superintendent. It's all about teamwork.
Thank you, Ms. Zak. Any additional, oh, Mrs. Sullivan, please.
And just so the public knows, the superintendent was, I mean, I was around when he was principal up here, which was a long time ago. And he was principal up here at Brockton High for like 10 years, was it?
No, I was a dean, assistant dean, and then I was principal here when Dr. Zakowitz retired.
Right. So a lot of people might not remember that because, you know, they're a lot younger.
It's lost in 30 years.
Right. But Superintendent Thomas knows Brockton High inside out. And so the school committee supports it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. Any other members? We, before we take a vote, we have to go down in the order. So the first one was A, which was discussing a potential vote for the Mass D E C, single district virtual school amendment for Brockton Virtual Learning Academy. Is there a motion on the floor on that?
Motion to approve the Mass D E C, single district virtual school amendment for Brockton Virtual Learning Academy.
Motion on the floor. Is there a second? Second. Motion was made by Mrs. Ellers. It was properly seconded by Mr. Sullivan. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, raise your hand. It passes. B, I'm going to ask Aldo if you could come up on this relative to the MSBA review, just so it can be explained again. It is the feasibility study. And I know Dr. Cobbs is here as well.
Good evening.
If you could just explain again the feasibility study, because there's a process in place. This is the first process. First, we had to get accepted. We got accepted after the third submission. Then we have to do feasibility before we can continue to move forward with the renovation.
The feasibility study, the MSBA will come in and they'll tour all of our schools, not just on Brockton High. They'll tour all of our schools. They'll tour our facilities, our maintenance plans and programs in place. They'll look at our enrollment, and they'll walk through, and they'll determine whether we need to rehab the school, whether we need to build a new school, whether we should build two schools, you know, it's opposite ends of town. They'll take a lot of data in connection, putting that plan together before they decide. And once they go through that feasibility study, they'll come through with some costs of what they feel it should cost to do the program. At that point, we'll bring it back, once that's done, we'll bring that back, the mayor will bring it back to the city council. They'll discuss the overall project, what it entails and what it would cost. The city council then would have to give authority to say, let's move forward with this project that they intend to cover their portion, which the numbers are close. It's almost 80% state and 20% our funding. I think it's 79.58 is what the state would pay. So at that point, the city council will decide, number one, to do it, and number two, how we're going to fund it, which all of our large projects, we sell a bond to cover, basically like a mortgage to cover the project. And in doing so, they will determine, again, MSBA with what they'll pay for and what we can do with those funds. If we decide to do anything beyond those funds, the city has to pay for that themselves. So if you wanted to add a second swimming pool, more than likely, MSBA will say, no, you don't, we're not going to fund that. We would pay that ourselves. But they will determine, again, whether we, you know, rehab, whether we knock down and rebuild a lot of the schools in the state. They rebuilt the school in their parking lot. And once the school's been rebuilt, they'll knock down the school. We don't have that kind of luxury here because we don't have enough room in our parking lot. We've got water on one side. So we'll see exactly what they determine to do. And that process will take more than a year for them because they don't just come in and take a walkthrough. They actually bring in engineers. They'll be looking at every pipe, every wire in the building. They'll be looking at what our requirements are. If you think about the amount of electricity that has to come in from the, you know, Belmont Street into the school, does that need to be increased, upgraded, all of those costs they'll be looking at.
Thank you. Any questions from the school committee? Ms. Zak, please.
Thank you, Mr. Petronio. So what is the timeframe for this, for the feasibility study? What are we looking at as far as the timeframe for, from them starting it to getting the response?
Aldo, I got that. Usually, they're going to, they're going to start, city council has to take a vote by November 1st to enter, enter the feasibility phase, which is, I think, is a $2 million investment, which is, gets reimbursed the 80%. Then they enter into it probably shortly after, into the new year. So it would be January of '24. Feasibility study could take a year and a half. The feasibility study includes all the physical work. They have to look at the current structure of the Brockton High. They talk to parents, community leaders about their vision for new or renovated Brockton High, and then they put everything together and will then advise the city whether to renovate or build new. And, you know, they'll tell you what actually is the best way to use the money. Hopefully, and then usually, probably 2025, that, probably mid-2025, they'll then go out to bid. And so it's, it's now because of COVID, it's usually a six-year process. It's become an eight-year process from start to finish because of COVID and lack of, you know, building supplies and those kind of things. So, but feasibility should start January of '24 and take about a year and a half.
Okay. So we're not going to see anything going on for a good, another year and a half, almost, too, starting from now. So I think that was, that was all. Thank you.
Just to, this will be the largest school building project in the state to date when, when they take on Brockton High. So they'll be, they'll be really looking at what they're doing.
Thank you. I know we were here when they met with us, and we toured the high school. So they were very thorough in, you know, it's, it's a large high school. So, but no, thank you. I just was, just wanted the timeline for those that are watching as well, to see the timeframe that we're looking at. It's going to be a few years out before we're actually going to start, you know, really working on this. But thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zak. Mr. Rodriguez, please.
Thank you. Aldo, with the steady decline in student enrollment in the district, how would that study affect this project? How is the state going to look at that, knowing that our numbers are continuously declining?
Right. I think the fact that the study will be over a year, year and a half, my thought is that the decline right now will level off. The reason that students have had other schools to go to is because the state had opened more charters and more seats available in other schools, you know, the private schools. Once those seats fill up, there aren't that many places to move to. I think as far as the real estate goes, right now, our rents in Brockton are very high, and that's also part of the issue with, with people going to areas that are, I got a call from Fall River saying, hey, can you send me some of your, some of your people because we just picked up a lot of your students? So the rents will change. I think at some point, this, this market has been saturated. I think the rents will come back down a little bit. So, and we will be receiving, you know, people moving in that can afford the rents. So I think it's, it's, like I said, it's declining, but I think it'll level, level off, and it'll start to grow again. So the state will look at that. You know, you can't just say we're going to continually decline because students have to go somewhere. So I think it'll come back. But by the time they finish the feasibility study, we'll have a pretty good idea of where we are. And new plans also require less people in the size of a classroom or a larger classroom, especially now that you have labs, you have laptops, you know, you have accessories you need to plug in. You can't fit 36 students in a classroom, you know, like we did 20, 30 years ago. Nowadays, you can only fit, you know, 20, 25 because of those, those parameters. So what you could see now is a hallway that might have four classrooms on it during MSBA study. That might end up being three classrooms when they're done because they need that additional space.
Yeah, they put a minimum square foot per student. So, like, if they were to, if they were to build a school now for 4,000 students, it would be much bigger than this place is right now.
So what I'm saying is if, at one point, we were over 4,000, the data's showing that we're declining. So if we, they're not going to give us a building space for 4,000, it's going to be for 3,000 or 2,000. Because that's where the data's.
It could be, but it'd be, it'd be a larger space. Basically, we could have the same exact structure we have here, and they could say now, instead of being rated for 4,500 students, we're only rated for 3,500 because it requires, as the superintendent said, so many square feet per student, especially with one-to-one device. Every student needs to be able to have their laptop on their desk. You need a place to plug it in. You've got those issues they've got to take up, too.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Any additional questions at this time? So we have a motion on the floor. It was properly seconded, right? Was there a motion by you, Judy? I can't remember. Is there a motion? No?
No.
Entertainer motion, please.
Motion to accept the MSBA review of the Brockton Public Schools Chapter 74 program as part of the feasibility study of Brockton High School Core Project.
Motion was made by Mrs. Sullivan. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Zak. All in favor, kindly raise your hand. All opposed, raise your hand. It passes. And so tomorrow we will notify the MSBA of the vote, ratify the vote and send them a copy of that. It's one of the processes we're doing. Also, just to, just remind you, I did submit the initial list of the committee, and I made a pledge to all of you. I'm going to be adding additional folks, right? Out of respect to the school committee, right now, the only member is the vice chair, and on the city council, the only member is council president Castro, but we will add more. And the MSBA understands that. They concur with that. So we'll go on now to C. Any further discussion on that? Or is there a motion? What's the will of the committee? Mr. Sullivan?
I'd like to make a motion. The motion is to approve the amendment to the superintendent's Michael Thomas's contract as spoke tonight.
Motion made by Mr. Sullivan. Is there a second on that motion, please?
Second.
Second. Motion was made by Mr. Sullivan, properly seconded by Vice Chair Ellers. All in favor, kindly raise your hand. All opposed, raise your hand. It passes unanimously. Before we get into adjournment, I want to take a moment of personal privilege as the chair. I want to say that Kim Gibson is one of the best presidents I've ever dealt with, 14 years as a city councillor and four years as a mayor. She, and I'm not saying that because we went to Brockton High together in 1988, but she cares about Brockton Public Schools. So to have people come in here tonight and, and indicate otherwise is just, it's just wrong. She's elected continuously and reelected by her peers here in Brockton Public Schools. So Kim, I for one want to just say, you're doing a hell of a good job. So thank you very much. Thank you. Any other matters before us tonight?
I do. I just wanted to make a quick statement. So earlier this evening, we had a chance to view the promotional video. So thank you, Superintendent and the team for taking care of that. Came out very nice. We're focusing on more vocational programs and get, trying to, trying to get more students to come to Brockton High. The one recommendation I would love to see is our Junior National Honor Society. I would have loved to have seen them walk up on the stage. I know we were limited for time, but maybe next year we can invite all the schools to come to the auditorium and give them that chance to walk the stage, get familiar with the high school, shake their hands. But we're so proud of all of them, the 265 students, I believe. So congratulations to those. We have a few of them in the audience, but we're very proud of you. And next year, I'd love to see them at Brockton High. Maybe break it up into two nights or something, but I'd love to see that. That'll give more families an opportunity to be able to join where some of the cafeterias are limited for space. But thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zak. Any, Mr. Homer, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to, again, highlight the accomplishments of the students that hopefully you had a chance to see in the auditorium tonight, the achievements for the students in the music program, the theater program, technology programs, things like that. School year's winding down. In the summertime, kids have excellent opportunities to stay involved in the school community through community schools programs. And I would really encourage families to enroll students. There are some free programs. There are science... There are some free programs. There are science programs. There are sports and athletics programs, swimming, soccer, all kinds of activities that we do throughout the year that kids can be involved in, and that's what builds the community. This is why my wife and I stayed in Brockton. This is why we chose to have our students enrolled in Brockton Schools. This is why I have no fear of sending my kids to the school, why they're here tonight. I think that it's important that families be involved in their kids' educations and support their kids in the activities that they choose to participate in. And I'd love to see and encourage families to get involved next year in the parent advisory councils and to come and attend those meetings with the school principals and provide the feedback to those principals that they need to hear. And I appreciate everybody being here tonight to share your concerns, and I encourage families to share those concerns with principals at the building level, too, so that you can talk about what your kids see in the schools, what their fears are, what their concerns are, and come together as a community at that younger level, and maybe alleviate some of that fear so that the kids won't have fear about coming to Brockton High School. Form that community, those friendships and those relationships early, in the elementaries and the middle school levels, so that that team that Mr. Landers spoke about is assembled before they arrive in grade nine, and they come together without fear. I don't think there's any problems that are happening here that are not happening in the urban district where I work, in the urban districts in the other parts of the state, in some of the wealthier communities where I've worked in previous years, too. Okay, the problems, they've been there for years. They've been there since I was in high school in the 90s. It is possible to be successful and to enjoy that success that we have in our school, and to be a part of that. And we offer wonderful programs and wonderful ways to get involved. I just encourage every family, everyone watching, all the parents, to support your students in those choices and promote those good relationships and promote the community, so that we can try and alleviate some of those problems in the early years, so that when they come to the high school here, they'll have a tight community that we can celebrate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Homer. Any other comments from the committee?
I just, again, want to thank the committee. I also want to thank all the parents, Brockton residents who came out and spoke, and I appreciate it, because if I was a parent and, you know, my, I would be asking the same question. So I appreciate their input and their advocacy and them questioning everything. 100% for all the questions, so I really appreciate them being out, and especially our community partners who've spent so much time with us. And again, parents that are concerned, it's, I welcome their feedback and their input. And again, I welcome them to come, if you can't make it the end of this year, please come see me at Brockton High. Happy to see everybody, but I really appreciate their input and feedback.
Thank you, Superintendent. Mrs. Sullivan, please.
And just one more thing. Superintendent Thomas, if they didn't see the video, the promotional video, where can they view it?
It's on our website. Right when you open our website, it's right on. And then the next school committee meeting, we'll play it at the beginning of the meeting, so we can make sure it's on. But it's also on YouTube, but you can, the link is right on, Brockton Public Schools, bpsma.org.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Ms. Zak, please.
We forgot to congratulate all our graduates from Brockton High School. Congratulations to the class of 2023 at Brockton High. We had the champion, we had the virtual, and I know I'm missing one school. Was it the Huntington? So congratulations, because we had Friday graduation and Saturday graduation. We did it. The clouds were opening. They were able to graduate on the field.
In the history of graduation.
That was the coldest graduation and the first rainy graduation for me in all my years here, so. But congratulations. We wish them all the best of luck. Those that are moving on to colleges, best of luck. Those that are going out into the working world, we wish you, Brockton High is always, always open. We love to see our alumni come back and visit us, so best of luck. And then we have a lot of our eighth graders that are moving on ceremonies, our fifth graders moving on ceremonies in the next few days. So congratulations to everybody. It's an exciting time. Stay safe. The summer's around the corner. Stay safe, but, you know, enjoy your summer. But congratulations, everybody.
We also want to thank all the elementary school participants, the athletes today at Masianno Stadium, where they had the field day, the fitness day. It was awesome. It was really awesome. And, you know, at the end of the day, that's why we serve, right, for them. If you have any free time tomorrow at Masianno, it's Special Olympics. They'll start being there at 9:30. It will kick off at 10 o'clock, and I know that they would love to see anybody and everybody be up there to cheer everybody on. So again, that's tomorrow. Kickoff is at 10. Anything else before us tonight? If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion was made by Mrs. Sullivan. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Homer. All in favor, kindly raise your hand. All opposed, raise your hand. It passes. Thank you. Have a good night. Drive careful.